Welcome this evening. We'll open the Committee of the Whole for the City Council Meeting of October the 20th, 2019. The council should have the minutes from the August 6th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a move to approve? Is approval? We have a motion in the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes carried. Colors House Discussion, I'll turn this over to you, City Manager Buston, for some initial comments.
So, Mayor, we did create a report for the council. Staff reached out to the various private sector people who had shown an interest in the Colors House. We spoke with some of the people that were involved with finding pricing on what it would cost to actually move the house. We talked to staff about where would be suitable places that the city has that we could move the house to. Bottom line is, we think that if the council is of the mind to move the house, it could be moved to Kiesel Park. It would cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 to $1 million. To move the house only would probably be around $100,000 to $200,000. But the big expense is putting the house back together again. And then, once the house is together, updating it and upgrading it to usable is where most of the expense is. So you have to have a foundation, wherever you're going to move it, you first have to put a foundation down of some type and then rebuild the house, basically, on that foundation, and then renovate the house to whatever use you're going to have it. So, we had, we do have some experience with this because we did move the Nun Winston House, but that was many, many years ago at a different time. But still, while the moving expense was not that great even back then, the putting the house back together and all the renovation of the house is quite expensive.
Mayor Pro Tim Whitten and Councilperson Smith. Councilman Smith, would y'all have any other follow-up comments?
Well, first, I would like to say thank you to you, City Manager and the staff for the report and for all those in the community who are interested, especially the Auburn Heritage Association, for reaching out and providing some additional information, i.e. some grant opportunities that may be available. And then, just providing the options. And I think it's very important for us as a council to determine if we think it's the best use of funds, one way or the other, to preserve the home and move it. And as we look at it, you provided us with two, what seemingly viable options would be Town Creek and Kiesel Park. I personally like Deneas, but we're being told that that's to remain a passive park, which my version of passive is, I guess, different.
We do believe that, given the agreement we entered into with the Deneas family when they donated the property, that this would violate the intent of that agreement.
So, with that said, I would certainly, if Councilperson Smith has some things to add, I would like to hear from the council, the thoughts of the memo and the expense that would be incurred. And this certainly doesn't rule out, there's still other individuals who may come forward and say that they want to move the house and purchase it and move it for their own private use. So, thoughts? Smith?
Same with me. I'd like to thank you very much for putting this together on the timeframe that we had. This is very thorough. Yeah, that's one of the things I'd be interested in, you know, this report, is this report going to be available? Is it available right now for everyone to publish or read?
Oh, we could send it. I had, at least one member of the press has it. But we don't, it's not like on the web, it's not published on the website or anything like that.
But we would redact any private individuals' name.
We'd probably, yeah.
I'd like to at least put that, make that part of the record so people can see where our decision-making was coming from here and where we're heading. In conversation, you know, and I think with the legal opinion, we're somewhat ham, or our hands are tied. Is that right, Jim, from providing funding for a strictly private transaction?
Right. It would be very difficult for us to spend public funds for a private individual to then have the house, even though it would be saving the house and there would be some benefit to the public by just having that house saved if it was going to be owned by a private individual. It would be difficult, according to the opinion we had, it would be difficult for us to put public funds towards that.
Do you see any other ways that we could offset costs? I know that there, one of the expenses listed in here were utilities, because of the size of the home, moving it throughout town could be difficult at intersections. And, I mean, is that something the city could, we could offer as a...
We could offer, we could offer moving our utility, our part. We couldn't pay for Alabama Power to move theirs, or Charter, or AT&amp;T, or any of them to move theirs. That would, but I think it would not be in violation if we on our own just moved our own to allow that to happen.
Is the city attorney of the opinion that we could provide that as an incentive without running afoul?
We could.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Joe, anything else?
I think the question then is just the, especially coming out of our budget discussion, you know, what, I'd like to hear what council thinks on this budget line. I mean, if we were to allocate, I guess, one question after you, Jim, is for us to move $1 million, just say it's a $1 million expense, I mean, what does that look like from a budget standpoint?
We would, well, we'd have to look at, and I wouldn't see us, again, we would look at it, how long does it take for us to put this back together? It might be a two-year project. So instead of moving a million dollars for one year, it might be $500,000 a year, let's say. So, if we move it now, we could adjust FY '20 of around the $500,000. We just have to look at what the total expenses would be. But, let's say we use the moving expenses plus utility moving, whatever that is, and that's $2,000 to $500,000. We may take a smaller project or part of a larger project and move that out so that we spend those, that $200,000 or whatever thousand in the next fiscal year, 2021 or 2022. And the same when it comes to the renovation of the house, if we're going to do it in 2020 or 2021, then move some of that expense out. We have to at least be able to put the house back together so that it's weather tight. We may not have the funds in one fiscal year to completely renovate it and wait for the next fiscal year. So however the council decides to do that, we would just move funds from a particular project, move that project out a little bit, or a particular part of the project, move it further down the line.
And there's a possibility too, to hopefully, if it were to get that far down the road and the council were in agreement, to spend the dollars, that we would have some support and some expertise from the Auburn Heritage Association, which did move the Nun Winston House in 1996, and would be able to help us with maybe filling out some grant applications and providing some additional resources and other capacities. So, that might help offset the cost. But again, this is the first step in the conversation, and this time is set aside for us to hear from everybody as to what the thought process is.
What about the university? What does Auburn say about it?
We got an email from facilities at the university telling us that they were not interested in either moving the house or in accepting the house. Something to the effect that these, their experience with these older homes is that they're very expensive to move, they're very expensive to renovate, and they're very expensive to maintain. There was something to that effect, but that was the official, we asked for official word from the university, and that was the official word they sent us.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on the council?
Well, I wanted to ask some questions. So, and I just want to be clear on it because I'm not really familiar with the house or anything like that. So, are there three options to this? Is it moving the house, giving the house to someone else, or demolishing the house? Are those the three options? Or demolition is not an option?
Our option is move it or don't. That's all the option of the city council has. We, the owner of the property has said that they do not want the house. They are willing to give it to whomever wants to move it. That's my understanding. But if it is not moved, they will demolish the house.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I saw that in there, in there somewhere. Okay, and the other thing is, so if we decide to move the house at the city's expense and just say, and I noticed that there was two parts, there was two options as far as parks goes, it were Kiesel Park and Town Creek.
Right.
Okay, so what would the house be used for?
Same thing like what the house is used for, the Nun Winston House is used for. It's rented out to wedding parties, to family reunion parties, things that people in the community have that they need a facility for. And so, it's, we have the art show there once a year, the local art show, just different events that are rented out to different groups throughout the year.
Okay.
That's what, that's what the Nun Winston House is, and I would envision the same idea for the, for the Colors House.
Okay. So those, those parks was the only options? I mean, you wouldn't want to move the house somewhere and maybe set it up for office space and meeting room space and that type of stuff? That was not an option?
We have no place to do that with that type of facility. There would be no, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, it could, I guess, if we had a place for it, but we wouldn't want to put an office facility or a meeting, a work-type facility in a park. I mean, we want the park to be more of a, you know, where people come to gather for, not, they're not just going to the house, they're going to enjoy the park as well.
Okay, I really wasn't talking about if you put it in the park. I would, you know, wouldn't want meeting space in the park, but I was just saying, if you sit the house at another location, could it be used for that purpose?
I guess we could renovate it to, yeah, for whatever purpose that we wanted to eventually rent it. Right now, it's in office use, and part of what some of the people who have looked at it, they wanted to put it back to use as a, as a home. But we basically use the Nun Winston House as a meeting space, but it's a meeting for public gatherings to have, to rent for their particular family gatherings or things like that.
But the estimate for expense is going to, whether we put it at a park or put it as an off, I mean, it's going to be pretty much a similar type expense.
It'd be a similar expense, oh yeah.
If we were to do that, move it to either park, could we recuperate some of the dollars by renovating it out?
I didn't hear the question.
I said, could we recuperate some of the dollars if we were to put it in a park? I mean, I know it might be minimal.
I mean, at the numbers we're talking about and at what we charge, it's, it really, no. I mean, if you, if you take, let's say a million dollars and you look at the cost of, I mean, just that million dollars over time, we're not going to, every year, gain enough money to start paying that back. That wouldn't be, but there's more than just that. There's the saving the house. I mean, now, what is different here is we did that with something like the depot. The city invested heavily in the depot, but there's a revenue stream coming back from that because it's, you know, where it was, it didn't have to be moved, it was just had to be renovated, turned into a restaurant, so there's a revenue stream coming back that eventually we will get paid back from that. I don't see being able to move this anywhere, and we don't want to get in the restaurant business or, you know, any type of business like that. And the same with the, with the Whittle Dorm. We invested in that to help save that facility, but then that's being paid back to us over time substantially more than just what rental on, you know, or family gatherings would pay back.
Jim, I wonder if this, has there been any outreach towards Auburn City Schools as a possible partner in, in an endeavor that maybe we could envisage the house as being some kind of educational center? I know that the Colors family has agricultural roots in Auburn, and I keep thinking of the fields behind Jewel Collins Smith as, you know, a possible learning avenue for high school students or students in general of the city. I was wondering if there may be a possibility to make contact with the schools board?
We could. I don't believe we did.
No, we did not.
I don't believe we did. That's the school system.
Property behind Jewel Collins is owned by the university, I believe.
Yeah, that would be university, that wouldn't be the city schools. And we did reach out to the university and they gave us their word.
Yeah, I'm just looking at just this idea of, you know, this city collaborating from a number of different positions. That's all, I believe in the power of collaboration, if it's at all possible to make something for this community.
I think from a use perspective, I think we could, I'm not sure that, and we would have to reach out, but I'm not sure from a financial perspective that the school system would be in a position to be able to help us there. From a use perspective, yes, they could.
Anyone else?
Has the current owner been approached about the city just purchasing that corner parcel and then not moving it, but us using it? I know that, I know that the corner is probably a very, very valuable commercial property, and that's probably going to have a drive-through and who knows what. So, I don't imagine they would be willing to do that, but any chance of us buying it in place?
From what I understand, that the owner paid for that piece of property, we're probably talking about five times as much as what it costs to move it.
Thank you. Anything else?
I've met with a number of people about this, and like Brett and Beth said earlier, I'm grateful for the passion in our community. It would be my interest to see this house maintained. I have called a couple of people at the Alabama Historical Commission, and they're willing to be helpful. They could help push through reauthorizing this as a historic structure if it were to be moved. From a financial standpoint, they've, we've got some grants that we could apply down there, but it was mentioned to me that those would be $5,000 to $10,000. So it's not a lot of money. Also talked to another gentleman in Huntsville whose family has become very well-known for moving houses. It was recommended to me to call him, and I did do that. And the number that we were quoted for this report is the same number that he gave me, you know, $100,000 to $200,000 to move the house. He was also very concerned about the timeline and his work schedule as far as being able to do it, but he was very interested and he was very nice and he wants to be helpful. And so, he said, let him know if we were interested. You know, at the end of the day, council, we, this is, I think, our decision now. Obviously, there's still a window of time for anybody in the private sector to come forward, and we strongly encourage those people in the private sector that are interested. The window is still open and you can still participate in this if you're interested in this, and we would encourage you to call the owner of the house and begin your negotiations. But if that were to not happen, the council's got to decide, is this, is this the place where we would like to reallocate this kind of money? And that's a big decision, and none of us take that lightly. That's a significant amount of money that's not in our budget going forward that we would have to have a discussion and reallocate to do. And we don't have time on our side. So, we've got a September 30 deadline, I believe.
To let the owner know that we're going to move it, and then we have 60 days.
60 days afterwards.
And we may potentially have a little bit of time. It's my understanding that the owner may want, if we are going to move it, may want to charge us rent, a sum of $4,000 a month.
For the other two months.
So, that would be additional money, but we could maybe prolong it. One of the issues, if the council did want to move forward with this, one of the issues of moving it is time season to move it because it's going to be cut apart, and if it's very rainy, the rain gets on the house and could get into the house, and that becomes an added destruction property to the house. So there has to be some, some planning that takes place of, you know, moving it and then really trying to move it as quickly as possible to get it to where it needs to be. So there's a lot of planning that has to take place.
A lot of planning.
And then, when you, when you say go, then you go.
Well, the gentleman in Huntsville I talked to, Jeff Kennedy, was, he was concerned about the timeline. If he were to look at taking on the project, he was very concerned that he could get it done in that timeline. So, anyway, obviously, there's still time for the, for the private sector to jump in here, and we hope that happens. But what would be the council's desire for some type of determination or further discussion? Yes, Con?
Let me just ask one more question. You said the cost, okay, I understand the cost of moving the house, but the cost for putting the house back together. I mean, what type of condition is the house in that it's going to cost so much to, and I just heard you say that they're going to split the house in half. So is it that the house is in a, I mean, what kind of condition is the house in, the reason why it's going to take a million dollars to put it back together?
So they may have to cut the house in more than just in half. They may have to cut the house, definitely have to cut the roof off, and whether they can cut it off in one, in one piece and then move that roof by itself, move the, you know, maybe cut it in thirds to move the house. They don't move the foundation, so they're just moving the house. So, the first thing to do is pour a foundation. Wherever you're going to move the house to, the footprint of the house has to have a foundation, and that's whether it's a slab or whatever, has to be poured. That has to be all designed and based on the footprint of the house and the utilities and everything else that are going to go in the house. That is put in place. Then, once you bring the house there, you have to put it back together, just, you know, piecing it all back together. And then you decide on renovating the house to make it whatever it is that you're going to do. And that putting it back together, the renovating it, or pouring the foundation, putting it back together, renovating, that's the major expense. The moving part is probably, you know, a quarter of the expense. And we don't know until we know the route to move, how much it's going to cost us to move the utilities or get the trees cut or whatever in, on that route. Now, it's a good chance we might get some, we might get the Alabama Power or AT, most likely Alabama Power, most likely not AT&amp;T, but get some help with them, maybe not charging us as much to relocate their facilities, but then you still have Charter, WOW, others who are on the line, other carriers that might be on, on the poles. I'm told that it could be as much as $40,000 just to move a line off a pole.
Mr. Kennedy communicated that to me. He's paid that in Huntsville, $40,000, is what he said.
So is the expense not to exceed a million or?
These are all estimated.
And go over?
These are all estimates.
These are all estimates. It could. It could be a lot less, who knows? But these are estimates. All right, council, what would y'all, how would y'all like to move forward? Any ideas? Thoughts?
I think if it's our intent to preserve the home and make it for public use, then we need to go ahead and add it to an agenda, probably the first one in September for time's sake, because if it then needs another meeting for discussion, if we need time for public hearings and possibly a public meeting so that we can hear from the entire community, there may be people who aren't as passionate about preserving houses. There are many people who are passionate about preserving the house. So, you know, these are taxpayer dollars, and we have to make sure that we're using them in the best for the community. With that being said, it's historical, it has deep roots, it could be used for educational purposes, and it would be something that, I mean, we've seen with the Nun Winston House, the value it's provided for communities. So, it would be my recommendation to put it on the first meeting in September for the council to consider the allocation of the funds to move the home.
Jim, how would we do that if the funds are unknown at this point in time? How do we, how do we reconcile a determination on that?
We could, we could estimate the $1 million and then look at the budget and come back with some recommendations of how to fund that for, I would like to come back with a recommendation of over two or three years, fund that. And then, we would have a resolution on the next meeting where the council makes a decision. We would probably want to have a public, a time for public opinion or a public comment on that, even though it's not normal for us, it would be probably something you'd want to do, have a public comment on that resolution. And then the council decide either then or at a later meeting what you want to do.
All right, so Mayor Pro Tim Whitten has offered this idea. Anyone on the council have a thought or another idea?
I don't have a problem going along with Councilman Whitten offering, but I would, I think it's very important to have public meetings on it because I'd like to hear what the taxpayer, this taxpayer money, we're talking about spending a million dollars to move a house. A million dollars go a long ways to some of my neighborhoods in Auburn, and I just feel like it's something more left to the private sector to take care of, moving something that expensive. But however, if we get more people in favor of city moving, then I would certainly be open to the idea. But I really want to hear from the public before we make that decision because you're talking about taxpayers' money, and I'd like them to have a say-so in it.
Anyone else?
Okay, so, all those that are, let's just do this by hand vote. If everybody's okay with setting this up for the next meeting, first meeting in September, to have this on the agenda, we would have a public hearing before the vote, Jim? Or would we have it like the Committee of the Whole? How would we do a public hearing for this, if it's a resolution?
If we did a resolution, I would introduce a resolution. You'd open the public hearing.
Okay. So we could do a public hearing with a resolution?
And then you all close the public hearing and have your debate and decide what to do.
Okay. So, just raise your hand if you're okay with the council, if we were to put this on the September agenda to allocate up to a million dollars over two or three-year period of time, and we would have a public hearing beforehand. Is everybody okay with that? If you just raise your hand if you're all right with that plan? Okay, it looks like the majority. So, Jim, if you would set that up for us to do. And I would say to the community loud and clear that there's still time for the private sector to be involved. If anybody's really interested in this, we encourage you to participate and call the owner. I would also say that it's important for us to hear from all of the taxpayers of Auburn. As Councilman Dawson said, this is a significant amount of money, and we should not spend it without hearing from as many people as possible to have an opinion about this. So, please share that with us. You can share that with us through email, or you have all of our phone numbers, you can call us or text us, or however you'd like to communicate with us in the meantime, but we'll set this up in September. Okay? All right. Any questions on the agenda for the city manager?
Mayor?
Yes?
I do have one item that, item eight, F5. You will see on your, on your agenda that was sent to you that, we talked about that at the PACA meeting, that was supposed to be taken off of the agenda. It was taken off of the agenda for everything we published online or at the library, but it was not taken off of your agenda. So, eight F5 needs to be removed from the agenda.
Okay, eight F5. All right. Any other questions for the city manager?
Yes, I have a question. I think in the last, on the last city council, we approved a ordinance for Williams Street and the other streets on the Ken area. And I guess I had already made a statement about, I live on Williams Street, so I don't have a parking space. I park alongside the road. So I had recommended that when we did the no parking, that the no parking would be on the opposite side of the street. But, and I guess we didn't, none of us didn't look at the map because of the recommendation was made for it to be on the side of the street that I live on. So I would like to maybe have a discussion on that in our next committee as a whole to change that ordinance to put the no parking on the opposite side of the street. I guess that's how I need to present it.
Yeah, I think you've given us enough of a flavor of that. Mr. Buston, you and I talked about this the other day because Connie mentioned this to you, I think, earlier. We do have, there is a letter from one of your neighbors that... We do have, there is a letter from one of your neighbors. So I think we need to make sure that this neighbor understands that we would be doing that at the committee of the whole. So, so if we're having the public hearing for the, for this house decision during the meeting, we could do this at the next committee of the whole and have this discussion, correct?
We could. It's, it's, since this was an ordinance and you passed an ordinance, ordinance becomes law. It is the law now. So you would have to pass a modified ordinance. And before doing that, you need to have some discussion to direct the staff.
We would have discussion in two weeks. And then if the council wanted to move forward, the staff would draft an ordinance and we would vote on it at the next meeting after that, the second meeting in September. Okay. So is the council okay with moving forward with this?
Sure.
Okay. Counsel, okay? Okay. All right. We'll move forward with that. Anything else for the city manager?
I have a question. It's not on tonight's agenda, but I think we all received a letter from the Alabama Department of Transportation regarding a meeting in Salem. Is that something that the staff will be attending or is that something that we as council members should plan on trying to go to?
Kelly, I, I gave you that letter last week, Jim. It was a, it was an ALDOT meeting in Salem.
Yeah, that's not, that's a staff meeting. That's not for the council. That's the meeting that the staff will attend.
All right. Thank you. And we will have staff there, correct?
Yes.
Right. Okay. All right. Have moved or adjourned?
So moved.
All right. Committee of the whole is adjourned. Seven. Write it seven. You good? Okay. We'll open up tonight's city council meeting for August 20th, 2019. If we could get everybody's attention and if everybody could, please be quiet. All right. Caitlin, roll call.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Colby.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here.
Would you please rise for the saying of the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Under the committee of the whole, we just had a discussion about the colors house and we have determined that we will put this on the next agenda in September. This will include a public hearing. And we will look at the potential to spend up to a million dollars, possibly over a multi-year period of time, to take ownership of this house and move it and restore it and then use it for public good. Once again, I would like to encourage anybody in the community to please be mindful of this and to share with the city council what your thoughts are on this moving forward so that we have a broad-based perspective of what our community wants to do. In announcements tonight, I would say, tell the SGA thank you for hosting me on campus last Friday with milkshakes with the mayor and had a good and rich time over there, meeting a number of students that are getting used to Auburn. It was surprising to me the amount of students I met that were not from local areas or local metropolitan areas that were from places pretty far away. But it was a great event and I look forward to continuing that in, in the future. Anybody else on the council have an announcement tonight?
I do. I have a Ward Two meeting on the 29th of August at 5:30. It'll be in the library. And we're fortunate that we'll have the library director, Chris Warren, as our guest speaker that evening.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else on the council?
Mayor, we had an airport advisory board meeting and things are progressing nicely at the airport with their renovations of various taxiways. And so things are looking bright at the airport. And then this past Saturday, the Historic Preservation Commission, along with the Auburn Heritage Association, dedicated the historic marker, which is on North College. And that was nice to see. And I think everybody was very glad to finally see that installed and, and present.
Good. Thank you, Beth. Anyone else?
Yes. There's a meeting at the Boeckan Community Center on Thursday night. And I think it's dealing with the, and I'm, and I'm not sure, maybe y'all can talk a little bit about that at the Boeckan, at something about the Auburn Public Library Board meeting.
The Auburn Public Library?
Mm-hmm.
Public Library is in the process of developing a strategic plan for FY21 through FY24. We're hosting four town halls that are open to the public so we can hear from the community about what's important to them. The one at Boykin is the third of four that we're hosting in August.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the council have an announcement? Certainly, we all look forward to the Gooch Performing Arts Center grand opening this weekend. They've got events from Thursday through Sunday. The Sunday event is a community event, so if you'd like to come have some fun, hopefully the weather will be nice Sunday afternoon. We certainly encourage you to be out there. But just once again, look forward to all the rich and wonderful experiences that all of Auburn is going to be able to have within the confines of that building and on its grounds as well. Also, Friday night.
Mayor, I think it does start Thursday with an event for the students.
Absolutely. There's an event Thursday and then a concert Friday night and then Saturday and Sunday. Lot going on. Also, Friday night, Auburn High plays its first football game of the year and certainly excited about their season opening and, and school getting started. Hopefully, everybody's gotten in a good routine. And the university started this week as well. So Auburn is back at them and everybody's here and accounted for and ready to go. And speaking Auburn University, Jack, Auburn University Communications.
Good evening, council. Hope everyone's having a great week. Like you said, if you couldn't tell by the increase of traffic, first day of class was yesterday. We're excited to have everyone back in the planes, though. For this week's Auburn University Communications report, also like you pointed out, Mayor, we had milkshakes with the mayor this past Friday. This was a huge success as we welcomed students back to campus by handing out burgers and milkshakes with the help of Mayor Ham, I mean, Mayor Anders, I'm sorry.
I've been called worse, I promise.
Hamburgers, you know, ham. Appreciate you coming out, Mayor.
Happy to do it.
Auburn welcomed 4,382 first-year students at convocation on Sunday. National College Color Day is next Friday, so we invite everyone to wear orange and blue. Mayor, I know you wanted the inside scoop on our quarterback selection, so I'm pleased to let y'all know Bo Nix has been announced as starting quarterback. We're excited, we can't wait to see Bo in Dallas next weekend. I'm, I'm pleased to return this week with another student spotlight. Jalen Sanders is a junior industrial engineer major from Bessemer, Alabama. He has shown outstanding leadership and commitment in several ways. Jalen is the vice president of programs for the Black Student Union and programs chair for the National Society for Black Engineers. Jalen also is serving as a resident assistant at Cambridge Hall right now. We're proud of Jalen and all he's doing for, for the university. That concludes the Auburn University report for this week. And if there's anything I can ever do for y'all, let me know. War Eagle.
Thank you, Mayor.
War Eagle. Have a good one.
All right. This time is for citizens communications on items on the agenda. Once again, these are items just on the, tonight's agenda. You'll have five minutes. If you'll please come forward and give your name and address for the record. And remember, you are addressing the council and you're not addressing the staff. And we ask that you be respectful. Does anyone like to come forward?
I'm Sarah Jenkins. I live at 406 North College and I'm here on behalf of me and my hus, my husband and myself. And I'm going to read this letter because my husband says I chase rabbits. So here we go. We come before you today to simply ask that you do what the planning commission didn't do in the last meeting. That is to protect the North College Historic District from the onslaught of ADDUs in and around the downtown area. We nor our neighbors are against ADDUs when they are placed in the proper areas, but they, they run contradictory to what the North College Historic District created by you, the city council, represents. The North College Historic District is a small area that has been set aside to represent Auburn's past. It is listed in the National Historic, National Register of Historic Places and is the last grouping of historically relevant homes in Auburn. Each home represents a period of time in Auburn's earliest years, which have been and continue to be a, a home to many influential individuals to the city of Auburn and Auburn University. Each home is unique and brings its own history, architectural character and charm to the district. There are no two alike. There are several other historic homes spread across the city that are very valuable as well. But the North College Historic District is the only area protected by federal and state-derived guidelines and administered at the local city level. Our request is targeted only at the North College Historic District overlay, as was shown on your maps, provided by planning. I don't know if that was here at this meeting or not, but it's just that district, not the, not the abutting areas. We are asking that the ADDUs be prohibited, not permitted, in the North College Historic District pauper, much like they are also prohibited in the Northwest Auburn overlay. This means in all zoning designations within the North College Historic District, including RDD, which is the zone in question here tonight. The planning commission decided to not address the North College Historic District directly, but to send you a recommendation that all RDD designations be conditional use for ADDUs. And this council has already amended this very recommendation to form an ordinance allowing ADDUs in RDD designations by right. With that reasoning, the RDD was much larger than just the areas around downtown. Some potential, potential threats in the North College Historic District, in our opinion, are seen to be coming. We all know that there have been investment groups buying up properties around towns to fix up or replace with larger, newer and sometimes better structures, though everyone's idea of better is subjective. But recently, these investor purchases have caught our attention because they have moved in the North College Historic District. Investor interest in these properties is, of course, not illegal and it could be good if they're intent to preserve rather than replace. Most owners of the historic properties know that the responsibility of properly maintaining and/or rehabilitating a protected historic home is not one designated to bring solely investment return, but also to pervert, to preserve historic value for which a dollar value cannot be placed. There are many past and current examples within the last 10 to 20 years where individual and some would say investors' efforts have rehabilitated and preserved homes and structures within the district. Some are still used for residences and some for commercial uses, but all blend with the district and preserve the historic character. This, of course, is a never-ending process as properties age and new generations take over the responsibility. If a look, if you look around you, you can best, you can bet investors are looking. There are several RDD-designated properties and several NC as well that are currently in varying degrees of distress. While these properties seem to have a level of protection within the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, along with the city tasked with enforcing the aforementioned guidelines, the HPC does not have purview over the use of the property. And one can find recourse to go around these protections and seeking relief from them due to economic hardship and/or burden based on permitted uses. One such use today and the one being addressed here tonight is ADDUs, though there are also very many other uses allowed by right and conditionally in the RDD. We are not going to attempt to describe what technically defines an ADDU, C zoning for that, but rather to say that ADDU-style homes seem to be regarded as cottages with some style or character, which compared to the 60s and 70s-style apartment complexes around town, that may be true. But place them next to any home in the North College Historic District and they will look like the style of home that they are, beach cottages. They would simply be out of place and distracting from the character of the surrounding homes. In conclusion, what I'm asking you to do tonight is to make the effort to prevent this one type of, from making its way into the district. Thank you so much for your time.
Sarah, we're glad to have you speak to this tonight. I would say that anybody else who would want to speak to this determination later on the agenda, there is a public hearing with that decision. So you can come now, you can wait till then. But anyone? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Systems Communications is over. Jim?
Under city managers communication this evening, we have the announcement of one vacancy on the Lee County Youth Development Center Board of Directors. The term begins immediately and ends September 20th, 2023. We also have the announcement of two vacancies on the Industrial Development Board. The terms begin October 10th, 2019 and ends October 9th, 2025. The incumbents are Ted Wilson, who has served two terms, and Laura Cooper has served one term. Both of these appointments or both groups of appointments will be made on the September 17th city council meeting. And our next order of business this evening is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, I would like to remove E12.
Eight E.
Yes, eight E as in echo, 12.
12.
As well as, wait a minute. Yep, sorry. E, eight E7.
Anyone else?
I'd like to remove E13.
I'm sorry?
13.
Eight E13.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to remove eight E4 and eight E5.
Anyone else? Mr. Buston, we'll take the removed items as they were in order, I guess?
In order. So item eight E4 is the authorization of payment of $25,000 to the Auburn Opelika Tourism Bureau for the city's portion of a sponsorship of the LPGA tournament. The city of Opelika contributed $25,000 and the tourism bureau contributed $50,000 for a total sponsorship of $100,000.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
It's made for approval.
Second.
My motion is second. Questions?
I have no issue really with the, the allocation of funds to this, but I'm curious about the procedure. The memorandum or the letter that you provided has stated that the city of Auburn has committed to match this funding of $25,000 for this year's event. It was a, it was not a budgeted item, right? There was not, yeah, it was not a budgeted item, nor was the city council involved in the process of committing the monies. So how, how do we come to the point where we are already committed to spend this money without it either being budgeted or brought to the council?
I'll, I'll give a first shot at this and then Jim, if you want to fill in the blanks. And then Ms. Bridges is here from tourism and maybe she can help us with this. I believe this tournament was offered to the Auburn Opelika area early this year. It was not expected. The people from the Trent Jones Organization, which is the retirement systems of Alabama, made a contact with Auburn Opelika and asked us to consider doing this. At that time, they, they asked for $100,000 in support. And at my first ever meeting, because as the mayor of Auburn, I serve on that board, this was discussed in February. Mayor Fuller immediately agreed to the $25,000 on behalf of the city of Opelika. And I did not agree to that on the city, from the city of Auburn's perspective. I told the staff I'd have to get back with them. And so I met with Jim. We talked about this. This type of allocation had been going towards the Barbasol Tournament in previous years. It was less than what we had been presenting to the Barbasol Tournament. And he and I said, okay, well, we'll have to put it before the council. So I went back to the tourism folks and said that we'll have to get this approved by the city council, but I'm in favor of this. And this is basically replacing a Barbasol contribution we've been making in previous years. The tournament was Memorial Day weekend. The numbers are about a half a million dollars in revenue to our cities through tourism revenue. It cost about $100,000. Our contribution was 25. There are certainly other things such as publicity and television and media and partnership with the retirement systems of Alabama that are certainly worth considering. But that's ultimately, Kelly, the council has to approve this money. So I can, as the- So, that's how we got to this point tonight, and I could be, have a few of those details incorrect. Jim, I don't know if you want to fill in the blanks.
No, I think that's all correct. It is, it is a risk at any time where these organizations understand that it is the council approval that finally allocates the money. If the council tonight decided not to allocate that money, then the Auburn Opelika Tourism Bureau would be out $25,000.
Like I said, I really don't have a problem. I think it's a good investment. I get, we get a good return on our dollar from that, but, you know, we just did approve the budget just two weeks ago, and it's still not... Just procedurally, I'm concerned about how we get to the point where we have something on the agenda that we've already, quote, "committed to" without due process.
And I think that was probably, the memo probably had the word "committed" in there. It was an unfortunate use of a word, because we are not committed until the council approves it.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
Is it anticipated this is going to be a reoccurring tournament? Do we know?
I'm sorry?
Is it anticipated this will be a reoccurring tournament every year?
We do have this, and this should have been on your 2019 budget adjustment. It is in the 2020 budget adjustment. It just was not, and that was my fault for not putting it in the 2019.
And I'm not even asking about that, that's fine. I'm just saying, do we anticipate the LPGA?
Well, all we anticipate for now is 19 and 20, but if it does continue, we anticipate that or more would be asked of us, yes.
So, it will be here in 2020?
Yes, and we have it in the budget for 2020.
Which we have approved.
Pardon me?
Which we have already approved.
Yes. Again, though, it will come back to you, even though it's been approved, it will come back to you for your approval.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Now, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Item eight E five is the authorization of payment of $15,050 to the Lee Russell Council of Governments for our portion of the cost to purchase four new vehicles. This is a cooperative agreement among the city of Auburn, city of Opelika, Lee County Commission, and the Russell County Commission. All are contributing $15,050.
Who for approval?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. You know how big their bus fleet is? How many buses they own or operate?
About 18 vehicles, I believe.
18 vehicles? Okay. Do they regularly replace these on a recurring basis as we do?
They do. I think they replace them after they're about 11 years old or so.
Right.
Around that neighborhood. Now, some of these, they have a schedule, and I guess the mayor and the chief or Councilman Dawson are on the board. They could maybe better explain this.
Sure. Thank you, Jim. I've actually asked the new executive director of the Lee Russell Council of Governments, Lisa Sunt, is here with us tonight. And Lisa, if you would come forward and potentially answer some of these questions, that would be super. Lisa has just taken over in July, I believe, Lisa?
June the 1st.
June the 1st, okay. And we're proud to have her.
I'm proud of her.
She's... Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If you could just kind of, if you would...
Sure.
Councilman Griswold's question, just kind of talk about your transportation activities and your inventory of buses, and how do y'all determine your needs and that kind of thing?
Sure. I'll just give you a little background about our two systems. At Lee Russell Public Transit, we run a demand-response system, which is a door-to, a curb-to-curb system, where people call in 24 hours in advance, up to two weeks, and schedule an appointment to doctor, shopping, anywhere in the city limits of Auburn Opelika. And then we also do go into the rural areas of Lee and Russell. We do have currently 18 vehicles in the Lee Russell Public Transit system. We have 11 that we're actually in the process of going and auctioning off and selling. Due to the extensive repairs that are needed for the vehicles, we decided it is not economical to go ahead and keep those vehicles. As Mayor Anders said, we usually keep our vehicles 11 years, and we usually go way above the useful life of that vehicle. What we've done between fiscal year 15 and fiscal year 17, we did not replace any vehicles. So, what we started to do in fiscal year 18 for the Lee Russell Public Transit was to start looking at our fleet, getting rid of the vehicles that were in bad repair, and then start ordering vehicles. So, in fiscal year 2018, we ordered five vehicles, and we asked each member government for $14,244. And then in fiscal year 19, we asked for four more vehicles, and both of these are replacements. So, what we're trying to do is the 11 that we are selling right now, and of course, that goes through a process where we have to get permission from the state, because it's an 80/20 match. So, the state owns 80% of our vehicles, and then we have a 20% investment. And so, both of those were replacement, and so those were four vehicles. The vehicles we ordered in fiscal year 18, we have received those five, but they're right now in process of getting the radios done and all that ready to be put onto the road. And so, in September, next month, we'll put five new vehicles on the road. And then we've ordered four other vehicles from our fiscal 19 request of $18,494 per member government, and that is a 20% match. And those are in production, so we do not have those vehicles. We also, part of that $18,000, you'll notice it's a little bit more than the previous year, we asked to have the match, the 20% match, to put onboard cameras in all our vehicles, so that we have a complete view. Our cameras that we have now, basically, you see the back of the bus, you may see the side, but what we're trying to do is get outside-inside views for safety and then in the case of any type of accident, so we have that feedback. And then in fiscal '20, what we did is, in May, that's when we do our budget process, we ask our member governments, we present our budget, and then any capital requests. And at that time, we presented to our member governments for $15,050 to order four more replacement vehicles. And then this is how we're, now we're here requesting that allotment from the city council. What we're looking at, just to kind of give you the future look, is in '21 and '22, we'd like to take it down to two vehicles, and those would be expansion vehicles. So, and of course, as you know, as each year, we will be retiring some vehicles, and hopefully we'll be able to catch up on our replacement schedule. So, that's where we're at right now. And I'm happy to answer any other questions about the system or come back another time if I need to go into more detail.
And the council have a question based on?
Well, I just want to make a statement. The service is awesome. You know, I have a friend that worked for Lee Russell, and she transport people to doctor's appointments and stuff. So, you know, the contribution, I think, is well worth it to replace these transit buses, and it's, you know, it helps out especially the elderly who can't get around, and some of them don't drive and this type of stuff. So, I just think the transportation part of it is just an excellent program that y'all have. Now, how many, I mean, so what are the hours?
So, for the Lee Russell Public Transit, and we do have another system in Phoenix City, that's the Phoenix City Express, that the city council, they fund that, that's their program. But our hours are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We do provide transportation to our senior centers, Auburn Senior Center, then we do some other aging contracts, and so, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And they can call and make a reservation from 8:00 to 2:00 each day.
And it's just not for the seniors, it's for?
No, it's for anyone who wants, I mean, we also have a contract with Auburn University where we transport their handicap students. Also, of course, on their system, it has to be a student, so we can take their family members if they need transportation. So, we, it's for everybody. It's not, it's not just one person. It's for the entire Lee and Russell counties to utilize to get where they need to go. And we don't have limitations on where they can go. So, if it's Walmart, or it's to the mall, or to the library, it's just, you know, wherever you need to go, that's what we want to try to do, is provide that transportation.
Well, thank you for y'all's services. And it's very inexpensive to ride those.
Right. So, it's $2 inside the city limits. Now, if you go outside the city limits, it does increase a little bit. If you're going to Hertzboro, then it may be $6 a trip.
Yeah, awesome.
So, we should anticipate an annual request for additional vehicles? You said in '21 and '22?
Two more vehicles, and that match would be around $7,000 per member government. What we're hoping to do is that we can start backing off and that we would not have to ask maybe for two or one. And then maybe some years, we wouldn't have to ask for any, and then we would span it out. And one thing we will do, because I do know that your budget was approved in March, that we're going to start planning earlier in January and making sure that we get any request in for that two-year period, but if there's adjustments, that we definitely don't have this happen again. So, I apologize about that.
Yeah. Budget was actually approved in July, but we gather all our information March. Any other questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
I would encourage the council, if you would like to get further educated about the services of their entity, to call Lisa up, and she'll give you a good cup of coffee and spend about an hour of time out there with her staff, and you can really appreciate everything they do on behalf of our citizens in Auburn. So, I would encourage any of the council to set that time.
Please, anytime you want to come by and just hear about our services, we have an aging department, a planned economic development department, and our public transit. But we'd love to come back and talk to you more about our services and how we can better serve the citizens of Auburn. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Lisa, we appreciate you being here. Okay. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item AD-7 is the purchase of 2.62 acres of land from Clayton Properties Group Incorporated for the construction of Fire Station Number Six. The property is located at the intersection of West Farmville Road and Miracle Road. The cost is $90,000.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments?
I think this is great news. We'd like to thank you all for moving on this. It's particularly a point of interest for me, being in the fire service in our neighboring city. It's a long-range plan, and I think, as I was thinking about it, reading it on Friday when I received the packet, such a long-term plan also requires, from my perspective, my experiences with Opelika, is I start doing the numbers of Station Six, three shifts, probably with about five staff in each of those, so you're looking at an additional 15 staff, some of whom will be required to be officers, career guys. And I just started to think about the whole, the wonderful program that we have here with student firefighters contributing to fire safety in the city, and the possible planning required to get ourselves into a position where we seamlessly move into a staffing situation that doesn't have our students spread thin all over the city. So, thank you so much for moving forward on this, and I want to stay in my lane in terms of how y'all go about it, but that was my concern with regards to just the overall long-range planning of it. So, thanks again, appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay. So, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item AD-12 is a development agreement with HP Auburn LLC for the 320 West Magnolia project.
Mayor, we've had, well, I, we've seen several emails with requests, some from members of the DRC and some others who are following this project closely. And there's some concerns that maybe, albeit the project is a good one, and it's what we drove for in the Downtown Master Plan, maybe some of the elements of the development don't meet the Downtown Master Plan characteristics. And just wondered if, by all possibility, we could table this and ask the developer to maybe have one more pass with the DRC, if maybe all the committee members could be present, so that they work through some of the suggestions that were emailed, which were part of several different features. And I know we have the representative from the developer here, so just thought that the council would be in support of maybe tabling this to the next meeting to allow for that conversation to happen.
Motion to...
Jim, procedurally, where are we with this right here, if there were to be an offer of a table? Do we have to have a motion and a second, or do we need a motion, do we need a motion and a second to table?
Table, and a vote.
Okay. So, is there, we have a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any other questions or comments regarding this?
Yeah, I'm in support of the concept of the development. I just wanted to show you what we received. It's very hard to make a determination on these elevations as they are presented to us. I wear contacts and glasses, and it takes a, it takes quite a lot for me to really determine what I'm looking at here. And for a development of this magnitude for our city, I'd really like to get a better look at it. It's very hard to make a thoughtful determination on this. Perhaps maybe if we could get a look at some street views of this building to better assist us, to see what it's going to look like. It's very, it's very difficult for me to get a sense of it here.
And Mayor, if I could, the developer is not required to do Design Review Committee.
Correct.
They did volunteer to do that. I understand that just today, they submitted a second set of drawings that will go to the committee. I think just this afternoon, they submitted those drawings. So, it's my understanding that they are continuing to work through the committee. But I did want to make sure we, that the council understood they are not required to do that. They have by right approval to build in that area.
Right. And I'm merely suggesting that the developer and the DRC take one more pass before we actually, as a body, move one way or the other. I'm personally in support of the project, but it is a very large project and a very important part of West Magnolia, and the issues and the details, and I just want to make sure upfront that we know what those are, not down the road and so forth. And I don't know time-wise if pushing not to September, first meeting in September would create, you know, an undue hardship in the process.
I think it'd be appropriate for the developers' representatives to like to step forward and maybe make some comments related to what we have stated here tonight. If you would give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Andy Barfield, I'm with Holder Properties. Council, the city manager mentioned we weren't required to go in front of the DRC, and we elected to do that and volunteer to do it, because we wanted to be good stewards. We feel like we have created a fantastic project, and you guys have seen me before, I've been up here before to talk about that. We think we've solved a lot of challenges with that corridor. We believe the architecture is outstanding. The way the site lays out, not only from an elevation perspective, with Janelle being about 14 feet higher than West Mag, but also the way that we have essentially worked around the university's parking lot and subway, we feel like there's tremendous articulation in that project. So, facades, et cetera, we think we've answered those questions. DRC was great, they had great comments. We've worked with the city staff, we've been meeting with city staff for nine months now on this project. To answer your question, Ms. Witten, about timing, we started demolition, and we really want to move through with the development agreement, and we've worked closely with Scott and Megan to do that, and we feel like we've gotten to a point that we've accommodated the city and what they've asked for in that agreement that's actually up for vote tonight. So, we feel like we have been very good stewards and come to the table and worked closely with the city. I would hate to table this another couple of weeks. As you can see, we're starting to move, and we just don't want to be in a position where maybe some of the other student housing developers run into on the back end, where they're rushing to get things finished. We want to do this right, and the project is going to be fantastic. It looks ama, it's going to look amazing, but we also need... It looks ama, it's going to look amazing, but we also need to make sure that we're moving through the process in the right manner. So I would ask that you guys please review it. Like I said, we volunteered to meet with DRC, we'll do it again, we'll sit down with their staff again, we don't mind doing that, we think they brought great comments to the table. It's purely the fact that we're not required, and so we would like to get approval on this, but we'll be glad to sit down with them again.
Andy, I appreciate y'all's effort with the Chick-fil-A. I mean, I think that's going to be a great win for the community to get that traffic off Magnolia, and we look forward to that. I would say this to you, from my perspective. Student housing is one of the most controversial issues we have in our community right now, and it's imperative that this council feels good about the things that we allow and we approve in this community. And we're held accountable by all of the citizens of Auburn to how these projects operate, how they integrate, and ultimately how they look. Your project is different than a lot of the rest of us because it's a four-sided project that we're all going to consume from four sides, not just a couple of sides. And the downtown design review team, I understand and I respect the fact that you didn't have to do it. I was a champion of that process, and, and I believe in what they're doing, and they were disappointed they didn't get to finish the process with you. And so I would have preferred that y'all had finished the process before you came forward here tonight.
Thank you for understanding.
And I think that would have been in the best interest of this council and been in the best interest of the community. I don't have any doubt that what you tell me is correct, that you're going to have a beautiful project there, and it's going to work well for the community, and Auburn students are going to enjoy living there. But we're in a unique time in our city's history right now. Any other questions for Mr. Barfield? Yes, go ahead.
Do you mind if I just respond to that?
Absolutely.
So we were not informed that we needed to come back before this city council meeting to do that. In fact, the way that we have, we're pulling together the color board now, and we were told that before the building permit would be issued, that they would need to look at the building, at the color board, which is fine, we encourage that. But it was not, that was not contingent upon approval. So from a timing perspective, we didn't understand that, so apologize for that. But, but again, we'll be glad to sit down with them again.
How long do you think it's going to take for your completion of your project?
I'm sorry?
How long, do you have an idea of how long to a completion of your project?
Every bit of two years. So, so fall of 2021 is when we plan on opening.
What do you, what do you anticipate in the experience you've had, a two-week delay? How would that set you back?
Tremendous.
How so? Could you give me an explanation?
The impact, I mean, if you can't meet that schedule, the school calendar, and have it ready for students to move in, it's tremendous. I don't even want to guess the financial burden, but just the sheer magnitude of relocating people if they need to be here, it's tremendous.
Any other questions for Mr. Barfield? Thank you for coming forward.
No, thank you.
I appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second to table this. Are there any other comments?
Is there a requirement for the development agreement to be in place for them to do anything, to break ground or whatever? Because they're already beginning demolition, correct?
Right. This development, since it's a by right development...
Right.
What the development agreement does is allows for some added streetscape, larger sidewalks, things like that, allows them to be able to use some of the right of way now and then to do their development. If without the development agreement, they would have to main, stay on their property to do their development. So in this particular instance, the development agreement does not hinder them from developing. It, actually, it's, it's more for us to get what we want rather than for the developer.
Any other questions? Okay, so the motion on the table, the motion that... On the table is the table. Thank you, Brett, for helping me through that. All right. So we do have a motion and a second to table this to the next meeting in September, which the date of that meeting, Jim, is September the 3rd, I believe. Okay, so the motion is to table this until the September 3rd meeting, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All right, so we have tabled this to the next meeting in September.
And item 8E13 is the payment to Donahue Land LLC in the amount of $250,000 from access fees collected by the city from customers in the region of the Preserve Gravity Sewer Main.
Move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this this evening?
Jim, I believe I pulled this from the consent agenda, just so that the public could hear it, hear it one more time, if you would mind explaining this situation.
So this was an event that happened about 12 years ago. There was an agreement between the City of Auburn and Donahue Land. It starts a little bit before that, the Preserve Development was in place, and their attempt was going to be to do a forced sewer main, a pressured sewer, which turned out that they couldn't do. So then it was decided that they would need a gravity sewer in order to open up the Preserve. Part of that goes, went through land owned by Donahue Land and, and, so there was an agreement between the City of Auburn and Donahue Land that for that portion of the sewer, they would repay Donahue Land from access fees collected from the Preserve to the amount of $250,000. Soon after that, there was another agreement that nullified that agreement and said that the Preserve would pay Donahue Land. Between the two agreements, Donahue Land had already paid the city $80-some thousand that would have gone to Donahue Land. We gave that back to the Preserve with the understanding that they would pay Donahue Land the $250,000. This was also at a time when the economy started to fail, where it was in that 2007, 2008 range. So the expectation was that it might take longer for the Preserve for, to pay Donahue Land that amount of money. So I can see where, you know, Donahue Land saying, well, we're still waiting on our money because of, of things that happen economically. There is nothing in, in the new agreement that says how the Preserve was going to be paying Donahue Land. And although the city was getting the benefit of the sewer system, as was the Preserve, there's nothing in the agreement that said that the city should make sure that the Preserve paid Donahue Land. There might be an implication that that was the case, since it was the city originally who made the, the agreement with Donahue Land to actually get that in place. We did a lot of research to try to figure out, and since then, Donahue Land LLC went, I mean, the Preserve LLC went bankrupt and is no longer in existence. So we did a lot of research to find out, well, did the Preserve ever pay Donahue Land LLC? None of our records show that we have any record, email, whatever, that says that ever happened. We talked to the survivors, there, there, some of the members of the Preserve LLC are no longer, are deceased, but the survivors that we spoke with do not remember ever paying Donahue Land. So as it comes down to, to the point of, from my perspective, the city has benefited from the collection of fees, not only from the Preserve, but all around that area, which I believe is, is, this serve also, or this sewer also serves Donahue Ridge, Highlands, Clayton Homes, and Auburn Ridge. So we've collected fees from all those places, access fees from all those places, well in excess of the $250,000. So while we may not have any contractual legal obligation to pay that, I think, as I've said in my memo, we seem to have at least, we benefited from it, so somewhat of a moral obligation to pay that, and we, we cannot see that it was ever paid.
Any questions or comments? Motion and a second.
So we're, we're not obligated to pay it, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right, but it's just the right thing to do. In other words, it's to pay, since we benefiting from it.
Yeah, that is my, that is what I take from it, just, others could have another interpretation of we are obligated, since it is, I mean, from my, my perspective is I don't see a legal obligation, I don't see a contract that says it, but I saw one that we did have, and I saw that we reaped the benefit. So it seems to me like it's the right thing to do.
Okay, so I, did we not discuss this in the last, I thought we agreed upon this in the last meeting?
We did, we did discuss it at the budget meeting, but like I said, even though it was in the budget, it does still have to come to you for approval.
Okay, I got you.
Jim, in your memorandum, the first, the very first agreement, the February 2006 agreement, it doesn't say anything, in the memo, I'm sure that, I know the agreement's much more lengthy, but it doesn't say anything about us paying them back by way of fees. Saying that the memo, the actual agreement did say we would pay them by way of fees?
The, the agreement with, between Donahue Land and the Preserve LLC did mention access fees as the way of paying.
I'm referring to the original agreement.
The original agreement did not say that.
February 2006.
Correct.
Between the Preserve and the City of Auburn.
Between, the original one between the Preserve and the City of Auburn, or between Donahue Land and the City of Auburn did not say access fees. The one between the Preserve and Donahue Land did mention fees.
I'm sorry, I think we're still, maybe we're talking a couple of things. February 2006, this is from your memorandum, the Preserve executed a agreement with the City of Auburn. And that agreement doesn't say anything about repaying it by way of fees in your first paragraph of the memo?
Let me let Megan read from the actual agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Griswold, you're referring to the agreement 06206? Is that, is that the one that you're asking about, or 06207, the one with Donahue Land?
There's resolution 06-18 in the memorandum from Mr. Buston.
Oh, now that was an original, the original agreement, 06-18, was just establishing that the Preserve was going to construct a forced main, which is in essence, you pump sewer from, it doesn't have, we always want sewer to flow downhill very nicely, so it drains where it's supposed to go. And in this instance, you, you pump it, and the sewer at the Preserve does have a large pump station within the Preserve, but this was going to pump it down to the Sagahatchee Interceptor. And excuse me, because I am not an engineer, but I'm going to try to speak English about sewer systems, but it was going to pump it down Donahue Drive, for lack of a better term, straight on down and get hit at Tributary and go right to the Sagahatchee Interceptor. The Preserve was not able to deliver that type of project, and it was the city's desire to not have this be a forced main all the way down Donahue. It is much preferable and much safer, from a health, safety, welfare standpoint, to have it gravity flow. Mr. Haley was willing to work with the city to help facilitate a gravity sewer in this area, and that was the preference of our professional staff, and that is how we ended up with multiple agreements dealing with this. And Mr. Haley's role and Donahue Land's role was to help facilitate the construction of a sanitary gravity sewer that the city wanted and asked him to help with.
So the, the, the agreement you're referencing is what I spoke about at the beginning, that is, that is just the agreement of the Preserve doing the forced main. So the actual two agreements we're talking about between the City of Auburn and Donahue Land and the Preserve and Donahue Land are numbers?
062, 206 and 207, and then 07, 038 and 039. I haven't researched this, but you know.
06206 between, that was between the city and Donahue?
Donahue Land.
And the Preserve.
And the Preserve, so three parties?
The city 06206 was just the city and the Preserve, just to make it more confusing. 06207 was the city and Donahue Land.
Okay. All right, and it says this agreement, let's see, the city was contemplating entering into a contract with Donahue Land to construct the, the regional sewer line. Did we ever enter into that contract?
We actually did.
And that's the, that's the agreement that you're referring to when you say that it was our intent to repay by fees?
06207 did, did address that, yes, we were going to pay by fees. Through access fees, we're going to pay a dollar amount per year memo, and then the remainder of the money would be paid to Donahue Land as we collected access fees, and there was a very lengthy process in that development agreement for repayment and how we'd pay it quarterly and those kinds of things.
All right, so at some point, we had an agreement between the city and Donahue to repay them $250,000 by way of collection of fees?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
So we've collected the fees?
More than, it was $250 plus whatever the remainder.
But we have collected those fees?
We have, and we continue. As, as development continues, we continue to collect them.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those are all the items that we took off of the consent agenda.
So now do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the balance of the consent agenda is approved.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is the approval of amendment to Article 4, Table 4.1, prohibiting ADDUs on parcels within and abutting the North College Historic District. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions. Those conditions are that ADDUs are permitted by conditional use in RDD citywide east of North Donahue, and that ADDUs be allowed on parcels abutting the historic district. A public hearing is required.
All up in the public hearing, if you'd like to address the council on this subject, please come forward and give your name and address to the, for the record, and please make sure that you address the council.
Nick Hayes, 333 Brookside Drive. Regardably, we're up here again to discuss this matter. It was before you all, you all made a decision, I believe, three months ago approximately regarding ADDU in RDD as well as other areas, you made a decision.
Well, Mayor, I'm sorry, we did, we needed to introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Oh, before the public hearing?
Before the public hearing.
Oh, really? I didn't know. Nick, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I'm sorry, yeah, that was my fault.
We have a motion and a second. Is anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? If not, now, public hearing?
Yeah.
Sorry, Nick.
So roughly in May, we were here to discuss the ADDU and RDD as well as other areas. It was decided by the council to keep it permitted. Councilman Griswold, who lives in the historic district, kind of abruptly brought up the idea of making it prohibited in the historic district. That was reviewed by staff twice, I believe. Their recommendation was no. The mayor Anders decided to, let's give it a third try, and here we are. I think, as it was discussed in planning, we don't have the map up here to show the historic district. I certainly think a lot of Mrs. Jenkins and her husband really appreciate what they did with the Crenshaw House, think what they're doing across the street is marvelous. Really, as I told them privately, I appreciate the investment they've made in the historic district as well as with that property. The thing that I think Councilman Griswold and some, some others are failing to grasp is where they live, their properties are zoned NC, and neighborhood conservation, which means that no more than two unrelated people can live there, and student housing is prohibited already where they live. The areas of the historic district that are RDD are, for example, Wells Fargo Bank, BB... BB&amp;T Bank, Liberty Properties on the corner, Mike and Ed's Barbecue, the Kai Fi House, Mr. P's Convenience Store, and the lovely laundromat that adds so much to our history. And then along North Gay, you've got the, what we call the frat house, which is at the corner of Gay and Drake, and coincidentally, this all came up as we were buying the Gay and Drake house. I know it's not personal, but it certainly feels that way as an attack by Councilman Griswold on us as private citizens just trying to invest in the community. And certainly you all, uh, you know, having this come back before us for now a third time after the staff said no twice, um, you know, it doesn't feel like really our rights are being protected. And, uh, quite frankly, it's, it's offensive. I have, uh, kids at home that I'd like to be with. While I respect all of you, I think you're all good people, everyone up here is, um, you know, trying to do what they feel is right for the community. We may disagree on, on how to go about that, um, but while I enjoy these meetings, I'd rather not be here, and, uh, I'd rather be at home with my family, and as I said three months ago, we were having to continue having that fight again and again, and now here we are again, because on certain things, you're all about following the rules, and then on other things, the rules are a whiteboard, and we can just erase it if, if we get a few emails. And, uh, it's, it's not right, it's terrible for the business community here to make investments and then have the rug pulled out from under them. And, uh, the folks in that area who live there are protected, they're not going to have ADDUs being built in NC zone properties. If they, if someone proposes building an ADDU in an NC, on an NC property, I'll be the first one up here to say that's wrong. But the rules have been the rules for a long time, and for the 30 or 40 years that the guy owned the house at Gay and Drake and allowed it to go into disrepair, there was never a conversation about changing the rules. And then now, there is one. And, and it's been allowed to continue, and I think that's wrong, and I think it's time for it to stop, and for people to be allowed to conduct business in an open and honest manner. And, uh, anyway, I hope this will finally end, and people who've made investments in this community to improve the community, to redevelop it, will, instead of having tomatoes and lettuce thrown at them, maybe they'll get a pat on the back and a thank you. Good night.
I just want to correct one thing, Nick, just to clarify. The third time was because our procedures that we put in place as a council were not followed correctly, and it was my responsibility to make sure they were followed correctly, and I didn't do that the first two times. And so that's why we asked the Planning Commission to fully vet this and to go through their process with that. The first two times, they had a staff opinion. So that's all on me, and I apologize for, you know, the delay in giving you some final decisions on that.
Well, hopefully the mistake can be corrected.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Travis Wisdom. I live at 1474 Turn Lake Drive. I'm in Ward 2. I've been asked to come, um, on behalf of several residents in Ward 2 specifically to talk about some procedural issues. So with that, Mr. Griswold lives in the historic district, as we all know, as he's freely admitted. He has brought before this council for the third time an ordinance that would specifically benefit him and his family and his property in that. At the previous meeting, he stated that he consulted with someone on the ethics of this and that it was fine because it would, quote, "affect him the same way it affects everybody else." Well, that is actually impossible, um, because as Nick pointed out, Mr. Griswold's property is zoned NC. The rest of the property that we're talking about is zoned RDD. So you can't compare apples to oranges legally and say that it affects somebody in NC the same way it would affect somebody in RDD. You all already know that. So that's just a falsehood. I don't think it was intentional, but that's not correct. Secondly, Mr. Griswold should not be allowed to vote on this issue. It's violating two specific Alabama statutes. Section 3625A of the Alabama Code and Section 36259C of the Alabama Code. Allowing someone who is governing all of us to propose and then ultimately help pass a governance that benefits him and his cronies directly violates the ethical laws of the state of Alabama. Third, February 3rd, 1999, the Alabama Ethics Commission issued Advisory Opinion Number 99-08 specifically banning members of city councils and/or mayors from voting or attempting to entice other members of the council to vote on ordinances that affect real property that those individuals own. This would affect Mr. Griswold's property, he thinks obviously to his benefit. That is a violation. If he has spoken to you about voting in favor of this, I would urge you to abstain from this vote. You too would be committing a violation under the codes of the state of Alabama. Finally, one of my favorite historic, historic figures in this country, Thomas Jefferson, said, "Government exists for the interest of the governed, not for the governors." Somebody who's pretty important in this community also said, "If history could teach us anything, it would be that private property is inextricably linked with civilization." That was Ludwig von Mises. He, uh, has a little institute down the road from here. I would urge you all to deny this, and again, I ask that Mr. Griswold abstain based on the ethical rules of this state. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Obviously, I need to address a few things there. First off, I didn't introduce this out of concern to where I live, and the assertion that I will benefit financially from whatever this decision is, is equally ridiculous as some of the other arguments I've heard this evening. In fact, if there were ADDUs on my property, my property would be more valuable than it is today. So that, that, that's kind of silly. There is no financial benefit to me or my family, or as, as stated, my cronies, whatever that might, might entail. I have, I know various lawyers will come up with various opinions. I am bound by the opinions of the city attorney, and I quote, "Based on the facts available to us, we do not believe the council member would need to recuse himself from voting or on a rezoning amendment he proposed that would affect the area in which the council member resides." This is a memorandum that was provided to Mr. Buston on the 4th of April, because I asked, I, in fact, I stated that I would be more than happy to recuse myself from this issue, and the city staff and the city manager took it to the city attorney and came back and said, "No, I don't need to." So that's where I would stand in terms of, of, from my perspective, of the legal ramifications of this. Any other comments or questions based on the current ordinance? Okay. This is, uh, this has got a couple of amendments to it. Mr. Buston, if we can walk through this, it's a little bit complicated how we walk through this, um, for our vote here tonight. So what we have had a motion in a second for, um, is to not allow ADDUs in the historic district, but we're not considering the two conditions that the Planning Commission attached. Is that correct?
With, right, unless you amend.
Amend those conditions.
Right, with the Planning Commission attached were two recommendations that they would like you to consider.
All right.
To change the, the existing ordinance.
Okay, so as the council has these two amendments in front of them, I want to make sure everybody understands what we'll be doing here tonight. So the two amendments are ADDU shall be permitted by conditional use approval in RDD citywide, and the other one is ADDU shall not be prohibited on parcels abutting the North College Historic District. Should not be prohibited, so they will be allowed on parcels abutting the North College Historic District.
They, they would be regulated based on whatever that zoning designation is for that parcel that abuts the district.
And so the, the options to the council now are to have someone recommend one or both of these recommendations, or some other, uh, condition that the council wants to put upon it.
Okay, so we need to take these, uh, recommendations from the, from the Planning Commission one by one?
I would say that you don't have to take them at all if no one wants to sponsor one of them.
So are there any?
If someone wants to sponsor one of them, then someone would need to make a motion to accept that recommendation, there would have to be a second, and then there would be a vote on that amendment, which would then become part of the ordinance that you will eventually vote on.
Can we have a general discussion on the overall topic? Absolutely, we sure can. Moving into the various motions? That'd be fine, that'd be fine, Kevin, that's in order. All right, well, the, the city and the council have, have obviously expressed a passion for protecting historical structures through our discussions of the Cullers House and by the dedication of the memorial or the monument just last week. This, the historic district was not created for the benefit of the residents. It's a district that was created by the city for the city. So it's not individual of, of, um, benefit for which this thing was created. As was noted earlier, it is on the National Register of Historic Places. All of Auburn will benefit from having a historic district. It's not just the folks that, that live there or own property there. You know, it's, it's a reminder of this longstanding town and gown relationship, because most of these homes in this area were created by, uh, old, longtime professors or whatever, and, and, you know, it continues today. But I mean, I, I think we owe it to the citizens of Auburn, you know, past, present, future, whatever, to do what we can to ensure that contributing structures as well as the non-contributing structures, uh, do what we can to accent the district as a whole. It was not the intent, my intent nor the council's intent, for RDDs to be reconsidered citywide, and that's what the zoning, uh, excuse me, the Planning Commission did. They, uh, there's, there's at least six separate zoning classifications within a small historic district, two or three blocks. However, the district as a whole is already an entity identified and recognized by the city. On the zoning maps, uh, there's already an overlay for the district as a whole. So, um, my recommendation was that we drop all discussion about changing things that are abutting or outside the district, because that was, abutting is fine, we dropped that, that was my, uh, original intent, but understand and recognize the rights of the folks that have property in the abutting districts as well, and have no intention at this point of, of trying to change any of that. But within the district, I would like to see ADDUs prohibited outright within the district itself. So, um, my recommendation is that whatever we need to do procedurally, in terms of amendments or whatever, is that we do not affect RDDs citywide, because that was never our intent, and that we prohibit ADDUs in the district as a whole, since it is recognized as a separate entity by the city in the zoning overlays. I don't know how we go about doing that. That's currently what we're considering, is prohibiting it.
I think you could make a motion to prohibit ADDUs in the RDD zone in the historic district, because they're already prohibited in all the other zones. Someone could make that, uh, motion, someone could second it, then you would have a vote on that. At that point, that becomes part of the overall ordinance, which then we would go and vote on the overall ordinance as amended, which ADDUs would only be prohibited in the RDD zones in the historic district.
Jim, when you talk about, when we, you and Forrest, one of the, and when you're in the historic district, what are your rights with your property, with your building? What can you do? What, what stimulates a redevelopment if you own a, a building in the historic district?
To make a really long story short, essentially, any alteration to the property that's visible from the right-of-way requires some type of review. Whatever that change is, it may, it could be reviewed by staff exclusively and handled administratively, or it may rise to the level of having to be approved and reviewed by the commission itself.
What about, what, what triggers, uh, the ability for somebody to, to redo their property if their building, what, what, is it a natural disaster such as some kind of weather event or some type of, if the building were to become compromised and have to be taken down?
Yeah, obviously an act of God, there's also what, there's also provisions in the HPC guidelines, it's referred to as demolition by neglect.
And could you explain, elaborate on that a little bit? In layman's terms, or you could do it officially?
So if you have historic property and you wish to have it demolished, you have to get a, a certificate of appropriateness from the commission. Demolition by neglect and the failure to maintain a historic property or a structure in a historic district shall constitute a change for which a certificate of appropriateness is necessary. The commission shall not grant a certificate of appropriateness for demolition or relocation without reviewing at the same time specific post-demolition or post-relocation plans for the site. The demolition of contributing buildings is not appropriate. The commission may only grant a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of a contributing building where it finds that failure to do so would result in an unreasonable economic hardship for the property's owner, the public safety is in danger, the building is no longer contributing to the district, or where demolition is necessary to otherwise enhance the district.
So it would have to be some type of real drastic scenario for an ADDU ever to be built in the RDD and the historic district, correct? Weather, some type of fire, something like that?
Well, that all depends on how this ordinance has acted on tonight.
But, yeah, at the, yeah, the ADDU as, as it currently exists in ordinance, could be in a historic structure in the historic district, as long as the outside of the, of the house is not changed. The, the inside of the house being five bedrooms, five bathrooms, if that's what constitutes ADDU, let's say, it could exist in the historic structure, but the outside of the structure, because the historic, it could be called an ADDU, but it's, it's, it could also be called a bed and breakfast. I mean, it's.
Or a multi-family development, which, there is one already in the RDD and the historic district. There's Lot 121, which is going to be student housing, 145, Lot 145, which has been historically, for lack of a better term, a frat house, with beer cans littering the, the front of the lawn for the last at least five years that I know of. So, I mean.
Yep, this council will see a conditional use application for 121 Mitchum for a multiple unit development in fairly short order.
And it already went through VZA and got approval for some modifications for that purpose, correct?
I believe so. I believe so.
And that you hint, or you start to discuss exactly my question. We outline there's five, four or five different zoning designations within our historic district, and of those four or five, only one currently allows for ADDUs to be built. And in that one zone, I'm counting nine, nine parcels, nine addresses, that an ADDU could potentially be constructed on. And of those nine, seven and a half, and I'm counting a half as 141 East Drake, because it has historically been, you know, a large group of students, but seven and a half or eight of those nine are either multi-residential, religious use, office space, office space, student housing, as in 121, and our frat house that we're talking about. So while I respect and grew up in a, in an antebellum home in South Lee County, building 1882, I respect and love our historical structures. I feel like they're already protected by what they're allowed to do on the exterior, and we're only discussing what they're doing on the inside. And I don't mean to oversimplify that, but that's what we're talking about, right? The use, or what we're describing as the floor plan on the inside of the house.
For those, for those historic structures that are already there in the district, they cannot be modified outside. The look cannot be modified.
They'll look like the historic buildings that they are currently. They just may be used on the inside as something else.
Correct.
So aesthetically.
Without, without the Historic Preservation Commission weighing in on it, they have, they have purview over the, what it looks like.
Right, well, that's what I mean. So that can't be altered anyway.
Right.
Forreston, or Jim, how would a lot owner, parcel owner voluntarily go about rezoning if they wanted to change that property from RDD to NC? If they wanted, instead of us ruling on that or voting on that, they had that, would they have the opportunity to change their zoning designation in the historic district?
Anyone can seek a rezoning application of their property. It's going to be evaluated on a number of different criteria. You know, you've got spot zoning considerations, things like that. But every zoning application, anyone has the opportunity to request to rezone their property in time. It'll, it'll get evaluated on its own merit, and will render a recommendation, as will the Planning Commission.
So in theory, these eight lots that we're discussing this evening, or nine, eight, nine, could voluntarily ask for rezoning if they wanted to do it?
Sure, they can ask for anything.
Okay, so just want to regroup where we are. Mr. Griswold has offered, and talked about that this ordinance is not allowing this anywhere. The Planning Commission came back to us and said that they recommended that ADDUs be permitted by conditional use in RDD citywide. I would like to offer another way for us to view this tonight as an amendment, and I did have the staff help me put this together today. Amend Table 401, Table of Permitted Uses of the City of Auburn Zoning Ordinance, such that the academic detached dwelling units shall require conditional use approval in the RDD in the North College Historic District only, which will allow RDD to be permitted through the rest of the city, and they would have to be conditionally approved in the historic district. Comments or questions?
Well, I think that's still a better scenario than, in my opinion. I mean, I know I've been told it's not spot zoning, but we are, we are pinpointing nine, or really eight, properties. And, I mean, we've, we've already discussed this, and we've already voted on this, and albeit all of these are in Ward III, and to me, Jay simplified it in its best format, so I don't need to repeat that. But you, I don't, I don't know how you can look at a house that's already constructed and say then all of a sudden it becomes an ADDU. So that is past me, and we all know how I feel about ADDUs to begin with. So I'm not in favor of even support of this ordinance that's in front of us. So I think it's in our best interest as a council just to stay with what we've already decided on and put this to bed.
Any other thoughts?
Are we certain from a legal perspective, if we were to vote in favor of the proposed motion, or it's not a motion, but what's your proposal, Mayor, that that is not spot zoning? I mean, I don't know what the definition then would, spot zoning would be then, just in.
No, there is some existing precedent, while it's not exactly like this particular scenario. For example, bed and, the use of bed and breakfast in the Neighborhood Conservation District is limited. You can only establish a bed and breakfast in NC if it's NC that's in the North College Historic District, and then that requires conditional use approval. So that's the closest thing I can come up with that would be remotely comparable to this.
I tend to agree with what Councilperson Witten said. I think she's got the right idea. I've discussed this long enough, it's time to just make a decision on what we're already talking about.
Any other thoughts? Okay, Mr. Cityman, I'm sorry.
Well, I do, because I'm just really confused. I don't even know what we're doing here. But, so are we voting to keep the amendment as is, or which is, I guess, to keep, to allow the ADDUs to come into the district, but for conditional use or unconditional use?
That's not what's before us. What's before us right now?
I'm just so confused, I don't know what to say.
It's confusing. Let's make sure we're straight. I'd rather ask the question and take our time.
The current ordinance, as you all passed it, has no restriction on ADDUs in the RDD. So they are permitted by right in RDD. So if you do nothing, that stays that way. The amendment that the mayor offered would only, it would not address anything else other than RDD within the historic district, and would make ADDUs conditional in RDD in the historic district only. That's the amendment. The one that Councilman Griswold suggested would make ADDUs prohibited in the historic district only. Those are the two that I've heard.
So we've got, so what we're voting on, we're really not, are we voting on our current?
Well, until an amendment is, is.
Offered.
Offered, seconded, and voted on, we don't know what the final ordinance will look like. So, Mayor, if you wanted to.
Procedurally.
Procedurally move that your amendment, then you need a second, and then you have a vote by the council to approve that amendment.
I think Mr. Griswold was actually before me, offered. If, I can support your amendment. Okay. All right, so I think our choice is to accept the ordinance as it is, okay?
Which means you do nothing, or you offer an amendment to the current ordinance.
Okay. So at this point in time, we'll just, I'll just read this amendment and see if there's a motion and a second. So I'll read it again. Table of Permitted Uses of the City of Auburn Zoning Ordinance, such that academic detached dwelling units shall require conditional use approval in the redevelopment district in the North College Historic District only. I'll use that as a motion for me. Second. Motion is second. Any questions or comments?
And we are striking, are you striking the abutting properties from the language? Is that, so that amendment would be replacing the?
The abutting properties would be allowed based on, we're not, we're not touching that at all. So if we're not touching it, it stays in there.
Well, right now, yes, you would have to make sure that you, you want to eliminate the abutting properties from.
So that would be a second amendment that we would.
I would do it as a second amendment.
Okay, all right. So this is the current amendment. So once again, I'll read it. Academic detached dwelling units shall require conditional use approval in the RDD district, redevelopment district, in the North College Historic District only. Okay, and so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Buston, I think we should do roll call on this?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Is everybody good with what we're doing? Does everybody understand? Jake, shaking your hand?
This is the first time the public has heard of this new iteration. Is there any allowance for public debate since you're about to make a decision on our properties, and we haven't even heard one word until this moment?
Mr. Buston, how do we handle that?
I certainly think they ought to be allowed to speak on it. I mean, in all fairness, I think they ought to be allowed to say what they got to say.
Okay. So if the council's okay, we'll reopen the public hearing. So we'll reopen the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward. And I guess you don't have to give your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry to take more of everyone's time. While I appreciate Mayor Anders's constant quest to sort of find a middle ground that everybody can be happy with, I think most reasonable people know that such middle ground doesn't exist, especially in this city. And I fail to understand why myself and other property owners have to give up anything to appease Councilman Griswold. We're changing this ordinance just so you can try and kind of make him somewhat happy, and I have to give up something. I get nothing. All I do is lose. He may or may not gain, that's, that can be decided by someone else. But, you know, imagine you have a 401K or retirement account, and you're not using it today, but at some point in the future, you are going to use it, and some higher power says, hey, Bob, why don't you just give up 20% of it, because the guy down the corner wants you to, doesn't really have any, you're not doing anything that directly affects him, but he just wants to get you to give up 20% of your net worth, because he wants to, and we think it'll make him feel better, and if you just give it up, it may satisfy him for a couple months. I just don't understand why I have to give up something and other people have to give up something with their properties, so to try and appease someone, and it's really none of his business. His business ends at his property line, and what I do with my property, as long as it's legal, it's none of his business. It's not, it's not really anyone's business. But in a, in a quest to try and make him happy, you're constantly taking from me. Three months ago, you took from me. Now we're here again, and you're trying to take from me again. What's to stop you three months from now? Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public here. Okay, so we'll take.
Yeah, a motion and a second on an amendment.
Motion is second. Okay. All right, so we'll take voice, vote.
Dawson?
No.
Dixon?
No.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
No.
Anders?
Yes. Five-four, failed. Okay. All right, so five-four, that failed. So the next, with the abutting, so do we need to, right now it says ADDU shall not be prohibited on parcels abutting the North College Historic District. We need to deal with that at all?
So if, if you want to allow them abutting, you need to amend the original ordinance to say that, what the Planning Commission recommended, that language that they recommended.
No.
So, yeah, you could just deny the ordinance, and it stays as is.
But originally, we had a motion and a second on the ordinance. I asked for unanimous consent, and nobody did at that time. I mean, we didn't.
So but now you could take a vote, and.
So now we take a vote?
But, hang on one second.
So exactly what do we?
You just said only. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's underlined version right here. Seeking all along.
I mean, you moved to amend, and so you moved to amend, and you moved to amend. It failed, and now it's back to, this has not been voted on. So you can take other amendments.
We can take other amendments.
And then you could call the question on.
The original thing, which we've got a motion.
Then that vote would be.
Basically, you're basically voting the ord, as, as was advertised.
I know.
Like, just like that.
Okay, so you have the option to, you had introduced the ordinance, you asked for unanimous consent. The ordinance as exists prohibits entirely, as, what is proposed is prohibited entirely in the North College Historic District and on parcels abutting the district. So if that is not what the council wants to do.
Need an amendment to allow them in the.
Well, no, so if you do not want to prohibit ADDUs in the historic district and the abutting, just vote no, and it will go back to the way it originally was, was that ADDUs are allowed by right wherever.
RDD.
I mean, ADDUs are allowed by right in RDD zones.
Okay.
So you have the ordinance, you asked for unanimous consent, now you need to.
Okay. So is the council prepared to go ahead and vote on that, Jim? Restate that, please.
I can't read it without.
No, that's fine. The, the ordinance is advertised would simply add a footnote to the table of permitted uses under performance residential development with a notation next to ADDUs. The ADDUs would be prohibited entirely in the North College Historic District on parcels abutting the district. So if you move for the motion as proposed, that either passes or it fails. That's all that's being, that's all that's being proposed as part of this ordinance. If, if, as the, as the ordinance is advertised, is denied, we just go back to what we've been operating under prior to this hearing taking place.
So a yes vote prohibits them in and abutting, and a no vote leaves it as is?
Yes, sir.
We could entertain additional amendments, correct?
Or you could add additional amendments.
Or no motion, and it.
We have a motion, second, we have to vote on it. We have to vote on it. So are there any other amendments that the council would like to consider? Okay. So if not, we have a motion, we have a second. And so now it's time to vote. Okay?
Dawson?
Hold on a minute, now.
That's fine, you're good, Tommy.
Got me confused.
It's confusing.
What exactly are we voting on now?
You're, you're voting on the ordinance as advertised, and as advertised, if the ordinance is approved as advertised, ADDUs would be prohibited entirely in the North College Historic District and on parcels abutting the district. If the ordinance is denied or it fails, that language goes away, and ADDUs are regulated as they presently are regulated in the zoning ordinance. In other words, no change has been effectuated whatsoever.
Thank you, Forrest.
Yes, sir.
Dixon?
No.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
No.
Anders?
No.
Under resolutions this evening, we have Item 10A1, as Don Allen requesting conditional use approval for a warehouse located at 1926 Mall Boulevard. A public hearing is required.
We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I have a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A2, as Chris Birdsong requesting conditional use approval for a multi-family development on property located at 531, 535, 541, 547, 553, and 605 North Ross Street. A public hearing is required.
We'll open the public. We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address this, the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. You have a motion?
Same.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay, so anything, council, another business?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Yes.
Couple of things. First thing is something happened tonight, questioning Mr. Griswold's integrity. I certainly do not agree with Mr. Griswold very often on what he wants to do, but I do think he's an honorable man. I only think he, I think he has his constituents genuinely in his heart, and I think he wants what's best, he feels his best for the community. Like I said, however, he and I rarely agree, but I do think he's a very honorable person, and that's all I want to say on that matter. Second matter is, I'll be having a ward community slash community meeting at some point in the near future to discuss the area around Wire Road and Cox Road. I'll be announcing the date and time. The planning commission had a day of, where they introduced some stuff to our community that I wasn't aware of, to like a day ahead of time, when I got a call from one of my constituents, so I would appreciate it in the future. We're going to do something like that, that the councilperson of that particular ward be made aware of it, so he can at least answer questions intelligently and not be caught off guard and look like an idiot, which is basically, I look like an idiot most of the time, but I look like an extra idiot. When they call, I say, I see a sign at Wire and Cox, saying we have a meeting on Wire and Cox Road area, and I've been out there for fifty, in October, fifty-four years. Great, great, great granddaddy's been out there, and I don't know about it till I see the little sign, and I am elected to represent those people, and I'd like to be made aware of it, so I can better represent my constituents. I mean, nothing against, I know it was just a simple mistake, but I appreciate if it wouldn't happen again, because I am elected to be their representative, and I'd like to be intelligent, and you can ask people on the police force, I never got mad about getting called at three or four o'clock in the morning. I got mad when I got to work the next morning, and the city manager was calling me, it's chief, and wondering what was going on, and I didn't know. I really don't like getting caught off guard, and I would beg that you in the future, make sure somebody lets me know about what's going on. And I appreciate the hard work y'all do, but I think it's imperative that the councilperson be made aware of stuff like that is going to occur.
And we understand, and we will make sure that that doesn't, that was our mistake, and we will make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you very much. Again, I appreciate your hard work. All right, anyone else on the council?
I want to echo what Chief said about Councilmember Griswold, one of the hardest-working guys on city council, doing what he can for his constituents. I don't think his character should be called into question. I don't think that's fair, knowing, working with him in the time that we have. Also, wanted to bring up one thing we didn't talk about, wanted to thank Capital Plastic Products for their 12 jobs and $3 million investment in Auburn, and SCA Incorporated for their 40 jobs and $10 million investment. I just, that's fantastic, very appreciative of all the businesses' continued investment and here in Auburn and putting people to work.
Okay. Thank you, Brett. Anybody else?
I'd like to support what you brought up at the end of our last council meeting, that obviously it's time for us to take a hard look at student housing, and I look forward to the Student Housing Task Force recommendations and do what we can to maybe possibly put some brakes on some of this stuff.
All right, anybody else? Okay, at this point in time, it's citizens' open forum, you can come and address the council about anything on your mind. You have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record, and remember that you are addressing the council.
Linda Dean, 474 Scott Street. I'd like to commend all of you for your very careful consideration for contemplating allocating some funds for preserving the Coler's House, probably the most important historical structure we have left in this town outside of campus buildings. I would surmise that every alumni that comes to Auburn and all of the towns, most of the townspeople cherish this structure. So Mayor Anders has mentioned several times that he would love it if private individuals came forward, but if they don't know that it's in danger, they can't come forward. We're about to have our football season here, and the, I'm hopeful that the city will put in some seed money for getting it moved if it comes to that. But even if the city put in seed money and let the alumni and the townspeople at large know that this house is endangered, so the Plainsmen is here tonight, if they will help us get the word out, that this house could be a jewel for this town. If you've ever been to functions at Kiesel Park and seen how that house is used, and the Coler's House could be used in a similar way, it really could, Connie. You know, you asked some questions about it. This is worth our saving, people. And just, just the positive step that you all took tonight, and hopefully will take in two weeks, when the next council meeting saying that you believe that this is worth preserving, to get other people on the bandwagon for do it. I'm deeply appreciative, and I applaud you all for this, so thank you.
What else?
Can I just make a comment?
Let me just make sure there's nobody else who wants to come forward. Anyone else? All right, Connie, you'd like to respond to this?
Yeah, I just want to say, Linda, I wasn't, I don't want to see it demolished, I was just asking a question, yeah, because, you know, I feel like it would be valuable to what area, whatever area they decide to put it in. So I don't want nobody to think that I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to have a house destroyed. I just thought that was one of the options, so, but I'd rather see it preserved than, you know, destroyed. So I just want to clarify that.
All right, anyone else like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, do I have a move to adjourn?
So moved.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Greg.